Counselor Vincent Howell.
Here.
Counselor David Uliwari Jr.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Juile Cora.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and I am here to represent the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Let us take a moment of silence to remember all the people who live on the eastern seaboard who are having terrible weather and are suffering from deaths and accidents and all kinds of terrible things that are happening. Pray that our national leaders take into consideration scientific evidence about climate change and level warning so that we can do something, take action to try to stop this from happening all over the United States.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item will be everybody's view. Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Uliwari Jr.
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Howell and second by Counselor Casey and Counselor Uliwari Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion.
Counselor Ms. Gackos, we don't have on here in the during this meeting the mayor's officials.
That usually comes with a regular meeting, I believe.
But I want to give these out now.
If I may? Yes.
Okay.
A good time.
This are the invitations for the day and night at the legislature unity bills committee. I want to thank Virginia and the staff for putting this together. They did an outstanding job. All the information is there. So I'm going to pass them out.
I hope not.
So this are the invitations. First of all, I think some of you did sign your lobbying request. So just so you know, if you had any bills to submit, they should have been delayed no later than Friday. Monday would have been a final review. There's no guarantee that it would have been accepted. Pretty much everything that we requested was submitted and approved in one bill, right?
Yes, ma'am. There was a total of 13 projects that were submitted along with the recommendation to submit for emergency funding for water leaks and road improvements as well.
And I believe it was a total of what $10 million, close to that?
Yes.
Close to that, okay. So this is the letter that I personally had delivered to Senator P. Campos on Friday because it was a ten line. And on there, I listened to every single one of your requests. I spoke with Ann Marie. Ann Marie went out there and had Daniel and Christine go out there and get all the roads. We came up with like a $4 million request for the road fund project, which I had spoken to Senator Campos about. In addition, and this is all going to be explained on this letter, we requested three emergency projects underwater. And I spoke to Senator Campos. He advised me to do that. I put the letter together. We had Ann Marie talk to the employees. We put together all the forms and requests and we submitted them. And in addition to that, we'll read here, that we also have been working with Mo Maesas, who is regarding the capital project appropriation of 200,000 for the museum, the Iromaral.
Iromaral, yes.
So we're all working together as a team. We're hoping to be successful and let's see how it goes. Also, in addition to this, Tomas Alasara, Representative Joseph Sanchez-Gottis, and so did Mo Maesas.
Okay.
So each and every one of you.
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question. On the emergency infrastructure and roads, are we requesting that as capital outlay or actually bill?
It's not an emergency. Actually, the emergency appropriations are only the water projects, those three. The road fund is a different appropriation and a different bill that it goes through.
Okay, that's what I was saying. It's not capital outlay.
So it will not go through as an emergency.
Right.
No, it will go through the road fund. Senator Campos assured me that I don't want, this is a lot of pressure on him, that he would work really hard to see what he could do to get us on the road. We requested approximately a slightly over 4 million, I think it was 4.2 or 4.1 million. And if we're successful and we can get half of that 1 million, we're in good shape. So let's see how it goes, okay?
But now that we're lobbying, it's not capital outlay, it's a separate?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
Of course, but you can still lobby. You can call the representatives. You can talk to them. You can, if you feel that there's something that was left out, it's too late, but we pretty much left it quite open. MBS and Daniel and Christie did an outstanding job in the road fund. So I think that the request is pretty substantial.
So why are we getting all of these blank forms if, I mean, it's already too late?
No, we already submitted them.
I know, so.
Everything's been signed. I was there personally. I just didn't get a copy of them, but Ann Marie's going to follow up.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have told you that. Ann Marie's going to follow up and get them from Santa Fe and then we can either provide you with a copy or she doesn't.
Okay, this is just the, I believe the summary will probably pop out a little bit more because the legislative request forms are a little bit cumbersome. And so we did submit them for all of the projects, but they do, we do have several projects, 13 projects that we did submit and they're all pretty self-explanatory. But by all means, if you have any questions, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you very much. And please read through them. I think that I really heard every one of your concerns. I heard it, Ms. Gackos, so did the directors. And we put together the best package of information on the road fund as well as even incorporated the ICIP and any other options that we felt would be necessary.
And just a couple of reminders, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We have the film gala on 17th of February, which is Sunday, and I think everyone has gotten information. If not, we can get ahold of, we can get the information over to you. Just give us a call and we'll update you on it. It's in Santa Fe, I believe. Am I correct, Virginia?
If it's in Santa Fe, it's late evening. Do you have to make a given reservation? So if you need any further information, by all means, contact us.
The other items, we will be closed on Monday. The City of Las Vegas offices will be closed on Monday. Our Bradner Dam dedication is on Thursday, the 21st of February. Let me see. I think those are the things that are coming up. Oh, and then there's a senior day on February the 22nd, and that'll be at the Roundhouse. And I also got information from Ms. Sarabat, who they're going to have a meeting at 8:00 regarding funding for the senior programs. And so she'll be attending that as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And the next item is the public input. And we have discussion items, number one, out-of-state travel to Phoenix, Arizona for two police personnel to attend police internal affairs training on April 17 through the 13th, 2019. We have police.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. So presently, we have two school-trained internal affairs investigators. They are both commanders. And Las Vegas being the close-knit community that it is, I felt it prudent that all three commanders be school-trained as internal affairs investigators. So I am requesting that Commander Steve Pacheco and Lieutenant Monica V. Hill, who is the professional standards person in that office at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Does anybody have a question?
Of course. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, you said three.
Yes, sir.
And who's the third one?
So we have two that are certified right now.
Right now.
And I'm requesting to send two more.
Two more, okay. Because I heard three, that's why we sent them.
Three commanders.
Three commanders.
Right. With the most recent promotions.
Right.
So Steve Pacheco is now a new commander. I'd like him to go as well as Lieutenant Monica V. Hill.
Okay, just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is out-of-state travel to Longmont, Colorado for an animal control officer to attend the training academy on animal care and cruelty investigation training, and that is on April 8 through the 12th, 2019. Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen.
Madam Mayor, council. So we're looking to send Alex, which is one of our animal control officers, off to the, it's called NACHO training. It's just an acronym for the National Academy Training, basically is what it is. It's one part of a three series modules. There's module A, B, and C. And this one particularly is A for one step. It was originally in Las Cruces. They did cancel that one and so the next closest one would be the one in Colorado for her to attend.
Also, the Animal Welfare Coalition will be providing a scholarship, a partial scholarship for her to attend.
Yes, the registration fee is $595, but AWC is providing that scholarship. So all we would have to do is pay the travel cost for her.
Please, Congress. What is the time of the board?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution of 8, assuring the availability of matching funds for participation in the New Mexico Department of Transportation municipal cooperative agreement in the amount of 75,000, which is 25% of total estimated project cost of 300,000 for Phase 3 of Five. And this is the West National project, then?
This one's going to be the West National project.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, council member. I'm here to seek the availability of matching funds for Resolution 1908, which will be the third phase of Five to help redo the road on West National. So this would actually take us down to a little bit better than 50% of the road, I guess, is where we are.
And what we started to do with this is we started to set aside funding in the 2019, 2020 fiscal year from the road funds for this project so that we can get as much of the project completed as possible.
Questions, Congress?
Counselor Casey.
Thank you. I need clarification on the way the resolution is worded because the streets don't, it doesn't make sense to me. It says, "Construction of roadway improvements to King Street from Grant to West National." Okay, so you'll be starting on Grant Street, which is right where the park is.
Right, right by the parks, yeah, by the baseball fields.
Okay, so how far, let's say from the main gate into Odrihous Park, how far?
It'll take us up to West National.
No, I mean, but south, has that already been done?
No.
Okay, so you're going to start there and then just go, okay.
Just here.
Yeah.
So King Street there, West National this way.
Okay, and then it says.
The map reads, I guess, where the police department right in front, that's partial, it's south Pacific.
That's partially called South Pacific.
Yeah, so right there the project will end.
Okay. That's what I was curious about.
And when the other part of King Street, that's my, I'm trying to look into it. The engineer is actually looking into getting us a cost estimate because it's a lot of drainage that.
Yeah, what it's about because it's terrible.
Yeah, so they are actually looking into it when they offer that. I did talk to both in the Corbin and they're supposedly getting me a cost estimate, but I could look into it and see how far they went in with it. Because I know they did come out and they looked at the road and from there they have to the cost estimate of what it's going to cost to do the drainage on that part. But we did look into it.
Okay, thank you very much, Congress.
Thank you, Madam.
And Madam Mayor, that's the question that I was going to ask is, I know we had, you know, the last time we were on Phase 2, and my concern has been the drainage on King Street, south of Grant Street. So where, this is Phase 3, so Phase 1 and Phase 2, how are those, I mean, are we putting the money aside?
No, the Phase 1, we didn't get very much money on that one. We only got the 44,000, I think it was. So that one just went basically into engineer fees and for them to go ahead and survey all the lines and stuff. The second phase is engineer fees as well, and then we are going to do partial construction that we should be able to do from King, from Grant to West National, from West National, I think it's, of course, Alasada will do the second phase. And the third phase, where everything goes is, we should almost take it all the way to New Mexico or up to New Mexico.
But just the cost?
Yeah, the engineer fees is, it's pretty up there.
Okay, so just engineer?
Engineer fees is up there, but once the engineer fees are taken care of, the rest is all construction.
And I remember, Madam Mayor, that you would try to amend to include the drainage parts or ask that again or?
Yeah, once they do the engineering fees, then they look at the actual funding. One of the key things that they look at the components was brought to the road fund as well as the feasibility studies, one, and the readiness to proceed. Once this has been done, then we're ready to go.
And a lot of the roads, now with the asset management time that we are going to start, we are going to start doing that, go ahead and evaluate a lot of the roads and we could go ahead and go off that and start determining from the worst to what needs to release. But that one should be starting up pretty quick, like.
So we're going to try to look at those costs, the drainage costs that we had talked about. And I know we had talked about them previously. We're getting cost estimates from Wilson Corbin and so then we'll bring that.
And I do have video as to, you know, the, we're getting the rains.
I remember, yes, I do. Yeah, I remember that.
And that road only has, I think, one small drain and the rest is just washing off the whole road. I've seen the drain that's under, it does need a lot of work.
I just want to keep it on the radar.
Yeah, sounds good.
We will. Thank you very much. Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Madam. I didn't, I don't have a question, but I was, had the opportunity to tour this area and I'm really glad to see this is happening.
Yes.
Yeah, it's really needed, so.
We've been lectured for a lot, a lot of years, and we've been, we had the opportunity to apply for the CBDG funding, which is strictly designated for the slum and blighted area. We didn't use it for that purpose. We used it for other areas. And we had made the change just to educate the council as to what's happened. They changed the actual slum and blighted area to an open area that the whole city qualified as slum and blight. And I went back and changed that to the areas that are designated under slum and blighted areas.
One of my, one of my employees lives near King Street. And so when I was telling her about this, she got really excited.
Yeah, these houses there that are getting excited. Yeah, we'll look into the south side as well. I know that, I'll go to give them a call tomorrow and I'll get back and see where they're at as far as cost is due.
There's a lot of improvements that are needed.
It's absolutely, thank you very much. Any questions? It's a pleasure, more?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item is Resolution Number 19-09, assuring the availability of matching funds for the participation in the New Mexico Department of Transportation Municipal Arterio Program in the amount to 125,000, which is 25% of the total estimated project cost of 500,000 for Phase 2 of Five. This is on Mountain View Drive.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm here to seek for 1909 as well. This one right here, we are applying for 500,000 on this one because last year we didn't receive. And chances of us getting this much is pretty high up there. So that's why we applied for this one. And this one should take us into about 75% of the project to get done on this one.
Awesome. It ought to be five phases.
Yeah.
Phase 2, we pretty much take care of 75%.
Yeah, this, we already have the monies for the Phase 2, which is going to start construction this year as well, because we're going to combine the both. And with this one, we're going to go ahead and concentrate from Grand up and it should take us, I don't know if it's East Drive or maybe the next street cut, but we should be able to do those, first the monies that we have now. Because there's a lot of infrastructure that they've got to take apart and a lot of the base is gone on that part. So they have to redo the whole base on that bottom part.
The good thing was that the sidewalks and some of the drainage is already in place and so they won't have to redo that, not all the way up. And so we're hoping that we can put more towards the paving and the construction.
I think one of the concerns that I would have from previous experiments is that when they go into to do the actual construction phase of it, that they don't cut into gabion baskets or other, other.
Drainage. And actually, Mountain View, it does need, I think we're going to be able to get away with a lot of the curb and the sidewalks because they are still in good conditions. There is a few spots that they're going to have to do ADA compliance as far as wheelchair accessible and stuff on some of those. But other than that, a lot of it's going to go to construction with this phase here if we do apply for it. And other than that, when I do, if we do get, I'm going to go ahead and apply for the match waiver. Match waiver will cover the first cost, like if it's the first phase. Hopefully, everything goes smooth.
Thank you, Madam. My War II residents are going to be really excited.
Oh, yeah. It's a hiding travel road. And now with the school and stuff like that, we're going to incorporate like, I think we're going to try to do LED lighting as well as the side, the crosswalks. We're going to look into the better crosswalk instead of have to paint them all the time and stuff. So let's see how it comes out when it's moving back.
One caution that I really want us to consider, right at Pinos, right when the, he doesn't have as many trucks as he used to. I mean, to use properly. Last night, I saw about eight trucks. So when they turn it, that causes a lot of pressure. And I see that with the basic, that's a lot of water. They're going to end up taking about 26 ounces of it, go down and then they're going to rebuild it up to get it to where it's in the last one. Going to use different type of materials there?
It's going to be the engineering field, it's going to use base course and the field and the asphalt. It's going to be a little different.
To save our roads.
Save.
This project is going all the way up to Seventh Street?
Yeah.
Where Seventh and Mountain View.
Yeah.
We're hoping we can get all the way up there. Otherwise, we would go up to, I believe it's.
It's going to go 75%, so it would be up to Collins or?
Might have it up to Collins and then we'll have that last piece that we have to do.
Okay.
And the bottom part is the worst.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of, in that area, I don't know if you've tried to go up Seventh Street and turn into Community First Bank there? Boy, there's a major problems there on the road.
Yeah, that'll get addressed. The drainage isn't there on the top part, so we're going to have to figure out either inverting the road and taking it to the drains or once the engineers will talk about that. That's probably the next phase.
But this, these are a lot of potholes right there when they turn into a car. Trying to get in there, so.
Well, we can address those. I will remind Christine to go up there and check this, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Casey?
I don't have any, somebody else.
I'm done. I just, I don't know if this could be the time, if you could give us an update as far as potholes and what's happening, because I think we're involved in getting bombarded with potholes.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it.
I mean.
That's fine.
Well, potholes right now, they're actually getting filled and we're taking care of mostly the mainly hiding travel roads. We got two pallets of the QPM, which is the winter mix, and they're down almost with the two already finished. They were out yesterday building potholes as well. But if you do have any other ones that are, you know, that do need addressing, go ahead and just give us a call, we'll take care of it.
And I've done that, but the column has been, I know, you know, because of the cold weather, you know, they've done just the sort of mailings.
Yes.
And those have already dissipated, you know, within a couple of days, so it's hard.
And we just got our QPM in now, so we're good to go. But we're already down to maybe 20 bags. We've used the two pallets, I think it's 100 bags.
So what's the turnaround?
Just get the PO ready and get, once we get our PO, we can go ahead and get some more.
We're just kind of waiting for the weather to warm up some. Yeah.
Yeah, they won't fire up the machine to build that. 100 tons are better, you know. And right now, nobody's actually using hot mix. And the little bit, they have to make sure there's enough horse to fill it on that part. A lot of them are actually using the state and stuff, they're actually using the QPM bag as well.
It takes a while to get them to fire up the machinery because they won't, they won't live for anything less than 100.
Tons, yeah.
100 tons, and so that's.
For us, we don't have enough equipment to bring 100 tons.
So where would we bring it, Santa Fe or?
Yeah, we bring that from Santa Fe. Yeah, because the mixture there is actually, it's a good mix. And the QPM, we get it from asphalt sealants and albacore pee, but that's, comes back.
Compr.
Yeah.
And what we're doing now is addressing the, the potholes, we're addressing the main roads as well as the school areas. But if you see any others, by all means, text me, I'll, or you can do anything, but text if you need to or call and we will address those. And to address.
And this QPM, it's kind of, it's temporary.
It's actually asphalt, it has a lot of oil and stuff today. It's a piece of it actually puts it in the whole department. It's a good, everybody, the state, pretty much, I think, the whole state, but I don't know if there's any other vendors as far as it, but they actually do cold mix as well. But it's cold mix, you could get it in tons and you bring it out and you just got to take it out of trouble yourself. But the QPM, it lasts longer because it's damp in case we start getting.
And at what temperatures can you, can you do those? At what temperatures? Because I know.
I think it's got to be, I think it's about 40 and rising. And I know you can go up there and go to warm the hole with the torch and then you can apply it on both of them. So I mean, right now, a while back, it was a lot of moisture. So the moisture, it's not going to adhere to the moisture. And to dry out the holes, it'll take a while. So that's why we were using mailings.
Can we do some type of, put out some information that we are working in as best we can for these issues? I have a feeling out there that we need anything.
I believe we did put something on the web, correct?
I'm not sure, but we can, I'll check to me and put something out there as well. And I'll put a phone number where they can call in to see if there is anything that needs to be addressed. I'd be glad to do that. Thank you, thank you very much. Counselor, are you ready?
On the potholes, when you, when guys put your asphalt or whatever you put in, do you guys blow them out or are you just?
I don't blow them filled that much, but they should be blowing up the holes and clearing a lot of the dust and stuff like that where they can adhere. And then when we do the hot mix, they do actually, they're supposed to clean up the holes and add the tack to it, which will stick better, you know. Because there's a different way to apply the hot mix than there is to this one.
See, there's a, there's a release right on, on West National and New Mexico, right to by the, across from the courthouse, just like they need to clean them up. And usually, I've seen that, you know, the public workers, they go and patch them up, but they don't cut the hole, you know, there's maybe 10 potholes in there. They just patch up the, cut a section and patch it up.
We do it.
Because I think, I think it will last longer because, you know.
Yeah, we did a class and if there is issues like that, we're supposed to actually cut them out and then go ahead and apply. And then actually, we've got to do it with a nice crown to it where water doesn't get into it. But actually, we're going to, now that we're looking into the crack ceiling, we're going to have to crack seal that too, where no moisture gets in there, it'll make it last longer, you know. There's a lot, we did a class of two days, two, three days of that asphalt. a lot of the dust and stuff like that, where they could adhere. And then when we do the hot mix, they do actually, they're supposed to clean up the holes and add the tack to it, which will stick better, you know? Because there's a different way to apply the hot mix than there is to this one.
See, see, there's a, there's a, I really should write on, on West National in New Mexico, right to by the, across from the carhouse, just like they need to clean them up. And usually, what I've seen that, you know, public workers, they go and patch them up, but they don't cut the hole, you know, there's maybe 10 potholes in there. They just patch up the, kind of section and patch it up.
We do it.
Because I think, I think it will last longer, you know?
Yeah. We did a class, and if there is issues like that, we're supposed to actually cut them out and then go ahead and apply it. And then actually, we've got to do it with a nice crown to it, where water doesn't get into it, but actually, we're going to, now that we're looking into the cracks, we're going to have to crack, seal that too, where no moisture gets in there, it'll make it last longer, you know? There's a lot, we did a class of two days, two, three days of that asphalt.
Do you have, do you have any employees that know anything about, you know, potholes and the way they, they do them, or?
We, yeah, everybody should be trained on that, too, for applying.
Because that area has been an issue all the time, it rains or it snows, or, you know, because there's a lot of traffic there, a lot of.
Yeah, there's, actually, that's a ponding area as well.
And right now, it's bad, it's really not.
There's a ponding area right there, where that means it's so much water holes there, because there's no drainage, the road actually falls over in the Mexico, so the water has to actually jump, and with the water sitting there with the cold freezing and stuff, it's.
It's hump about.
Yeah, so that one's going to actually have to get addressed now with this monies that we do, so we should get up to there, and hopefully, they'll build the road up, and it'll just go right over, you know, instead of ponding.
That's right. I was kind of thinking after this project starts going well.
And everything goes good, and we get the monies, it should get up to there, and everything should be covered on that part, you know?
Please speak to your legislators, legislators, because that would be so helpful. Counselor, help.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to see if we can reconsider, too, again, the asphalt zipper. It's called a piece of equipment that we had purchased, but then it was returned. But that company is still wanting to do business with us, and also, they would provide the training for our staff to show them how to use that piece of equipment. I would be more than happy to bring that information back.
And that zipper is, basically, it's for smaller, you know, like you see them right there where the tires run mostly, they'll just take care of that part. They will have to fill that. It's not made to do big patches, but, I mean, we could take care of a lot of the smaller ones with it and take the asphalt down and then rebuild it, but it's not made for big patches. Like, we did get a, we did get an installation on this Mountain View, where they tried to do the whole road, but we don't have the equipment to lay that much. We could do the small patch, but not, we're not trained to do the big one.
Well, I just think we need to really take a look at this piece of equipment again, and from what I've been hearing is, we've had a lot of little patches, little patches that we need to get done. And also, the patches that we are doing, it's recurring after the moisture gets inside, like you had mentioned, so.
Yeah, well, let's, I'll go ahead and start getting price codes and stuff like that, and see if we can get a class for it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one last question, sorry. I saw that they're, saw, saw cutting the pavement behind Moreno Street, behind the administration building at West.
Oh, what they're doing is they're doing the ENMR pack 2, they're running their fiber optic in there, so they're going to be tying into the businesses up on Ridge Street, so I think they're going to run it up to the fire department, if I'm not mistaken, and from there, they could go and tie in to the other businesses that want to tie into internet and stuff.
And the reason why I bring that up is, are we going to ensure that that load, when they cut, I've seen where, you know, some of these companies come in, they cut, and it's not.
We're actually working on that right now, because we've had issues, because they wanted to run it on top of the gas line. We had them see, we can move it to the side, and then it got brought up, because it takes so much water, if it starts to erode, so I actually sent them an email that says if it starts doing, that if they're going to pay for the cost of repairing it, you know? So we're actually working on that right now.
Yeah, just making sure that.
Yeah, because we're going to take care of ours.
Because buses do go through there quite a bit, and they just temporarily, you know, seal it.
And with the water, we were kind of worried about it, eroding and stuff like that, or potholing, I mean, like I did address that.
Thank you for being on, I just, I just saw that happen. Thank you.
Daniel, you did a great job answering questions.
Oh, jeez.
He knows his roads. Thank you, Dan. Very proud of you. Very good, very good, Daniel. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Daniel. That was awesome. For our next meeting, I did want to let you know that we have seven presentations, and then we also have an additional seven items for mayor and council to review, and that'll be on February the 20th, next Wednesday.
Why so many that aren't ready for this evening?
Let me take a look at the question. I agree. Yes, I'll be glad to. Well, we had a difficult time locating, getting hold of Leo Miasas to see it. He was going to come in, he finally did want to come in and submit that resolution, and that was after the, after the work, the work session agenda had been completed. We had a bar, Tana had a bar, DFA just approved her bar on Monday, Tuesday. Her four bars, and so she had an additional bar that she needed to include, but she didn't want to do it until the original four bars were completed and approved. The New Mexico Finance Authority, we've been working on the comprehensive master plan application, it just came in on Tuesday as well. So a lot of these things have just come in, and, and I've asked them to come in and bring them in and have them approved before, and so I apologize, but yes, you're right, we did have an additional, and I believe we only had four, and we had utilities for their management, their management contracts for the water treatment plant, those are critical for us to get in place, and the electrical work, the plumbing, and the, the management contracts are also very critical. She was going to wait till March, but these are critical contracts that need to be in place in case we have, knock on wood, any other water breaks, and that's the reason why.
And I have to admit, when I've sat in the council in the past, we have, I have actually items, 18, 20, 22, 25, actually, and some of them, 12 of them possibly, you wouldn't see until the regular session. So I think the camera has been really good about any of those.
We try to get them in as quickly as we can, especially if it's on a contract.
Oh, exactly.
Then I try to get them in as quickly, and I apologize, because there is seven additional items. Counselor.
Okay. Do I have any for the executive session?
I do not.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session per personnel matters by Section 10-15-1H2 of the New Mexico Meetings Act, NMSA 78.
Second.
Counselor, help?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Univali Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counsel Romero, a second by Counsel Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
That's all.